Welcome to the January 28th meeting of the Bellevista City Council. We will rise if you join us, please, for a pledge of allegiance.
Let's pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
New roll call of council. Councilmember Lockenack?
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd?
Here.
Councilmember Flynn?
Here.
Councilmember Fowler? Councilmember Borth?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
All right. Okay, thank you. Before we move into the citizens' input, there are a couple of things I just want to cover. The Arkansas Department of Health has issued their monitoring report for last week. There are hard copies here. The soft copy is also available on our webpage. And this afternoon, ADEQ actually issued a comment on the work that is being done on the site. You may have seen work being done over the weekend. And again, there is a hard copy here, and a soft copy is available on our website. Is Jill here? A resident contacted me with an excellent suggestion, and that was to put in place a burn ban that is one-half mile in radius from the center of the fire. That had been put in place by the fire department. There's no use adding more smoke. We have enough of that as it is. This morning, I was on the phone very early with our congressional delegates for two purposes. One was to urge them to lobby hard to the EPA for ADEQ to get the funding. You probably have heard that the cost of this is considerably more than I think anybody had ever thought it would be. And also, I spoke to Congressman Lomack, as well as pinged out the director of the Arkansas Emergency Management, looking for assistance to help the residents in this trying time, more than just... And also, just to remind you, everybody's got three minutes to speak. We'll hold you to it because we want to be fair to everybody. And if it's not a debate, however, the council members and myself will be here for discussion at the end of the meeting. I know we're all happy to chat with you. So, first, I think it's Steve McKee.
Good evening. My name is Steve McKee, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the tree ordinance. I think on the surface, it sounds like a great idea. It's understandable. I grew up in Lincoln, Nebraska, just down the street from Nebraska City, where the first American Arbor Day sprang up from the ground. And for years, every fifth grader received some sort of a vegetation. My sister received a tree. I received a lilac bush. And then unfortunately, they suspended the program, and my poor younger brother, he did not receive a plant. So I'm familiar with and could support the idea, but I think there's a couple of problems with it. I think there's been a lot of chatter about the issue of private trees possibly falling onto the trail areas. And I believe there may be some adjustments to that part of it, is sort of the rumor. But what I wanted to talk about a little bit more was Section 4, where the definition of "public trees." And it says something to the effect up above that city-managed property is the licensed property. So of course, it refers to the POA common property. And that the public trees are any tree located on city-owned or city-managed property. So it seems to me that it conveys the wrong message. I don't think anyone would go to Crystal Bridges and say, "Look, you guys are privately owned, but you are open to the public. You're free to the public. Anybody can come and go at posted hours." But I don't think anyone would say, "You know, those are public paintings." And so I would urge the council to reword that section of that proposal as well. These aren't public trees. They're private POA common property trees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think you're going to see some amendments tonight, Steve, and they're addressing your very issues.
Excellent.
Okay, next is Dot Newman. Jim?
May I ask me?
No, sir. I'm sorry. The period, but please have a seat.
I'm Dot Newman, and I live at 7 Morganshire Drive. And I was asked to speak about how this is affecting some of us health-wise personally. Morganshire Drive is 1.3 miles from the toxic fire. Any questions I ask while I'm speaking are rhetorical, and I don't expect answers. As golfers, you know that wind and weather are no risk vectors of arbitrary half-mile distances. Some of my neighbors and I are also proof. Though we're outside your half-mile zone, we have burning eyes, mystery sores, sneezing, shortness of breath, headaches, and coughing. The worst for me is the coughing. I'm an esophageal cancer survivor. The aggressive radiation left me unable to swallow food. However, a compassionate doctor fitted me with a feeding tube that doesn't need a drip bag hookup, 24/7, just to eat. The downside is the tube being surrounded by thin, tender skin. So when the fumes drift to Morganshire Drive, I cough violently, and the open wound rubs on the tube shaft within the skin. It feels like a knife stab with each movement. I'm also short of breath. After I flunked par my lung function test, the pulmonologist said, "It's not cancer or COPD." He's mystified why my lungs are half-full of fluid. I've also passed out twice in three months, the second time creating a scalp hematoma. But Mercy ER isn't looking for toxicity as a cause. Why aren't our medical personnel informed about the toxic air and how it can affect us? How can they help our children, our grandchildren, ourselves if they only know what they read in the Vista or see on the news, stories where we deny or diminish the hazards? Perhaps you hear my words as those of just another cranky old lady. But Morganshire Drive is diverse in age. My 40-year-old neighbor has headaches, coughing, and sinus. Another's dog has mystery sores. My neck has sores a dermatologist can't diagnose. My corner neighbor has breathing issues. This damage isn't limited to an arbitrary half-mile radius. It's spreading. People like myself with toxic air health issues must educate our doctors ourselves. Otherwise, they're looking for every cause but the most obvious one, and it shouldn't be that way. The responsibility to inform rests with you. This book has Mayor Christie's name on it, and I'm leaving it here because this is where the book stops. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Ann?
Mr. Mayor, council members. Last couple of days, I picked up on some conversation that conflicts with each other, and I'm confused, so maybe you can answer a question for me. As a property owner, if a tree falls from your property onto common ground, onto the trail, whose responsibility is it to clean that up?
You want to know who's in charge if a tree falls on the trail currently?
Who is responsible for actually cleaning it up? Is it the property owner?
No.
Or, no?
No.
Okay, thank you. You answered my question. Your work with me is done.
Never had to be.
Okay, thanks.
Mark Warsh?
I'm here today to talk about the fire and what it's done to my family. And I live at 5 Buckingham Drive, and we moved here probably about 18 months ago. And I have a prepared letter I just want to read to you. I had discussions with my wife and my three kids. I have teenagers, 18, 17, and 16, along with four dogs. My name is Mark Warsa. I live at Buckingham Drive with my wife, three teenagers, and my four dogs. Our quality of life has been impacted by the tropical fire. We've been forced to stay inside. Part of the fire, we spent countless hours out playing in our yard, walking in the trails in our home, taking the dogs on long walks, and relaxing on our back porch. Our health has been impacted by the tropical road fire. I personally have been diagnosed with asthma. My family has numerous symptoms relating to the smoke, and even our dogs have difficulty breathing. In the middle of November, I was awakened in the middle of the night from smoking the house. I thought our house was on fire. I ended up calling the fire department. They determined that the smoke was emanating from the tropical fire. Christmas Eve, smoke was entering our home, and we decided to pack up the kids, Christmas presents, and the dogs. We found a hotel to stay in. Over the next five days, we stayed in the hotel. We realized how much better we all felt not breathing the toxic air. We began looking at short-term rentals and made the decision not to return home until the smoke stopped. We have evacuated to an unfinished rental and are sleeping in sleeping bags and air mattresses, but we have clean air, and we're all together. This has come as a tremendous cost financially and emotionally for our family. I'm saddened that our city, our county, our state has failed to assist the residents and put our safety first. There are people suffering who are unable to evacuate. Others are struggling, juggling to pay mortgage payments and other things. Neither homeowners insurance or mortgage companies will assist us because an evacuation has not been ordered. The governor declared an emergency, but what he failed to do was evacuate the people that are being exposed to the toxic smoke. Therefore, I can't get any assistance. I'm carrying a mortgage, and I'm also carrying other costs involved with the rental I'm using. Residents are being forced, having to decide whether to walk away from their homes to protect their health. An evacuation needs to be ordered, and people need assistance getting away from the toxic smoke. Residents have not been hospitalized, or have now been hospitalized due to lack of concern for the community. Does anybody have to die, does someone have to die before you make a decision or evacuate residents affected by the smoke? And also, you had made a comment earlier about the burn ban. My request is, I'm a mile out from that area. My request is to expand that burn ban over a mile. I would appreciate that.
Thank you. And can you send me a copy of that, please?
Sure.
Also...
Dot.
Dot. If you could send me a copy of yours, please. Deborah Emmons?
Visual aids. Good evening. Thank you for all that you're doing for us. And I'm not being sarcastic. I mean that. I have something that I took this morning. I got it, well, first, let me tell you who I am. That would be helpful. Deborah Emmons. I am 2,640 feet from the tropical fire. I've got all kinds of medical issues going on now, and I'm very physically fit. I never go to the doctor. So I got it this morning, and have these beautiful sunglasses. And I had this whole speech prepared, and I just want to talk to you guys from the heart. Yesterday after church, first of all, I got up on Sunday. Now, I want to make it clear that you don't have to smell the smoke to have the symptoms. I've got 50 years in the medical label field, and part of that was transcription services. So I typed, and I'm very familiar with pulmonology, cancer, the whole nine yards. I had a transcription service, and I had 16 different doctors that I typed for all kinds of specialties. I'm a personal trainer. I'm very familiar with all of this stuff and how it affects my body. I'm like your scent dogs that you would take to the airport. You put me in a place, and I could tell you if there's smoke in there. And how now I can tell you is that I had a major surgery. I've got 60, I'm over 60, skin cancer surgeries survivor because I was a dumbass and baked in the sun in California, which I lived in for 50 years. I grew up in Neo Show. I lived there until I was 21, 22, and then my first husband had to have served, so I spent almost 50 years in California. And so I've dealt with people being murdered in front of my home, gang violence, you name it, fires. I managed to survive all of that and on my own for 20 years. I'm not afraid to speak up for what I believe in, for the city, and for my health, and for Mother Nature. People ask me, and I'm a California girl. I swore that I would never, ever come back to the Midwest. You couldn't get me back to the Midwest. Well, obviously, God had big plans for me because in 2015, I just, one of my friends from Neo Show on Facebook was paid beautiful pictures. I go, "Where is this place?" She says, "Daddy, it's 30 miles from where you grew up." I go, "No way." I had never, ever been to this area. I came here. The weather was the worst. It was raining. It was pouring. I spent an entire day trying to get back to California because of flight delays. It was an absolute mess. I got back to California, and one of my best friends back there, she said, "I've never seen you happier and more excited." And I'd just been through hell, but it was wonderful. I mean, I knew I wanted to come here. And then I, and then I, well, Dot, we had this conversation because I told you I'm never going back to the Midwest. And she said, "Yeah, you are. You've got big things to do back there." So, can I have two more minutes? Okay, well, I want to thank you for the burn ban because I had to call 911 this morning, and they argued with me about whether or not we had a burn ban. Okay, and I brought pictures. That's from this morning. I want to read what my diagnosis was from yesterday, when I went to the ER and had to get a cortisone shot, and now I'm like this. My diagnosis was difficulty swallowing and inhalation of gaseous substances accidental or unintentional. Initial encounter. This is the initial encounter at the urgent care. Thank you so much for all you're doing.
Chief, will you turn to Chris, please? Chris Nelson?
Hello. Chris Nelson, number 1, Carrington Drive. I came to the city planning meeting last week, and you stated that if things get too bad, you may be able to make the call to evacuate people. I've got here an ADEQ report from 8/6/18. And it's highlighted, I'll leave it with you, it says possibly a public health hazard due to unknown materials burning from within the waste mass, and it's the cause of the pollution. Last city council meeting, you said that you were going to try to notify people through the water bills. Still haven't seen that. Don't see a sign in Metfield Park, and that's within the half-mile radius. And we know that this extends further than that. What's the threshold? Really, what is the threshold? A child happen to die?
To begin with, the reason there was nothing in the water bill is because the deadlines had come and gone. Cassie, when's the next one? Cassie? It's going in the March?
It'll be in the February.
In the February bill?
The deadline for the following month is very early in the month preceding. The deadline for the January publication was very early in December, and we missed it by the time the city council convened.
So it is going to be in the February, Chris?
Okay. I appreciate, and I understand you guys are doing the best you can. That doesn't help people in the median area. Doesn't help when people show up in the middle of the night with activators, hit a power pole. Don't call and report it. We happen to be driving by. I called and reported it because the power line's hanging down over the road. Fire truck comes through there, it's going to smack it. Again, not my responsibility as a citizen, but I guess it is, to report these types of things. Who made the decision to withhold or to not notify? This is from August. It shows tires, solid waste, all types of stuff in it. Did anybody on the city council actually receive and report this?
No, I've never seen.
Nobody's interacting with ADEQ from the city when there's a violation in their city. What I'm requesting from the city council right here, you guys are under the microscope. We're watching. We're taking notes. This isn't a threat. This is a reality. What happens on your watch happens on your watch. If you don't know what you're doing, there's nothing wrong with asking for help. Escalate to the next level. Escalate, escalate, escalate. If you can't handle it, escalate. Again, ask the question, what is the threshold? How long till we wait till somebody dies? You hear these stories from these people. They're sick. They're getting sicker by the day. As they dig, they oxygenate the soil over there. It got worse over the weekend again. Went off the charts. We've made number one in the world again for having the worst air quality in Bella Vista, Arkansas. We're sure really living up to beautiful Bella Vista. I encourage you guys to start taking this seriously. You built a monument on that site while EPA testing was going. It's a joke. You never took this seriously. And you built a building on the site that's killing people. That's all I have.
Larry Clatten?
Yes, don't lose my clipboard.
I'm Mary Shalacy, 1 Dunedin Place. I was here last year, January 22nd of 2018, to discuss permit issues, contractor permit issues. And I asked this council a couple of things about assessing a penalty for contractors who don't pull permits. I asked the city to keep a list of contractors allowed to work in this city, those with insurance, proper licenses, et cetera, on file in the inspector's office. I asked for a penalty to be created to penalize contractors who don't pull the proper permits as required by city ordinance. Feedback from you, Mr. Mayor, was very positive. Few council members were also very positive. However, Councilman Lloyd told me the city had no money for that. In the same breath, she told me how hard it was to sell my house unpermitted work. Councilman Flynn posted a few months later that the city had a $7 million surplus. To date, nothing has been done, except Chris Sunnison, the former community development director, and the person in charge of the inspections department, was given an offer to resign. A building inspector also left city employment at the same time. I've been told by a very reliable source there were allegations of kickbacks. A question to the council: Has any homeowner been notified of any questionable inspections done by said inspector? I am in expensive litigation, and my home is still a mess. Our attorney, our new attorney, thinks it's going to be over $20,000 to litigate this. My contractor, Dustin Popejoy of ProBuild, is still building homes in Bella Vista with no penalty for not following city ordinances. Tonight, you have an ordinance on its third reading to penalize homeowners whose trees happen to fall on what is essentially their own property, common property as a property owner in the Bella Vista POA. The city wants to present these homeowners with the bill to remove said tree and/or to lien their property if they don't pay it. That's what I've been told. The city allowed a stump dump in city limits to operate without a permit, now causing suffering to the homeowners living close to it. When is this city going to protect we, the homeowners who live here, who pay taxes and improve the tax base of this city? You are supposed to work for us. Thank you.
Good job. Just a couple of points of clarification, if I may. You've been hearing some amendments about the tree ordinance as we go through the meeting. The stump dump was open prior to the city actually becoming a city.
But you were a city after, and you should have handled it, and you didn't.
I'm sorry, but they are regulated by the state by ADEQ.
It's not a legal dump, sir. It's not regulated at all.
We'll move on to Larry Kenmore.
You just passing these out would be good information for you. My name's Larry Kenmore from Silent Springs, Arkansas. I'm here to help Bella Vista, Arkansas, get dangerous drugs out of your homes and off the streets of your city to address the opioid crisis and your drinking water pollution from citizens flushing them down the toilet and throwing them in the trash. As you know, thousands of people are now taking and using strong painkillers, both as prescribed by their doctors and to get high from illegal drugs that have been obtained from questionable sources. Benton County citizens are dying from these drug overdoses at the rate of 163 people a year, the second highest rate in the state of Kansas, Arkansas. What about when these pills expire or are no longer being used? Where are they stored? Is it where children or teenagers can get them? What about when you throw them away in the trash or down the sink or the toilet? What does that do to the environment and Bella Vista's drinking water? We have developed a safe, effective, and easy way to collect and dispose of these drugs and has provided to Bella Vista, Arkansas, free with no taxpayer dollars. Here's how the program works. We provide a safe disposal bottle, just like this, that fits inside your medicine cabinet to every address in Bella Vista, Arkansas. These bottles hold 50 to 60 pills or liquids. When full, you mail it back in a postage-paid envelope, and you receive a new bottle. We also put up safe kiosks in convenient locations where citizens can easily drop off their unused or unexpired drugs at any time, not just on circuit days or specific locations. These safe kiosks can be set up in pharmacies, police, fire stations, libraries, nursing homes, hospitals, or businesses. These kiosks can be viewed on our website and are filled with a patented product that instantly neutralizes any drugs dropped into it. We provide a free school training program to all your students so they can go home and tell the parents how the program works. This program is your best alternative to keeping dangerous drugs out of the hands of children or criminals, and it will protect your police officers from temptation of abuse, which is a problem in Arkansas and Bella Vista. Isn't the safety of your children and citizens worth it? Wouldn't it be wonderful to dispose of these dangerous drugs without polluting the ground or your waterways any longer? It can be done, and we help you do it, at no taxpayer dollars. This is a community problem, and only your community can solve this problem by addressing it at home where, according to statistics, a large portion of the opioids come from. Let us help you safely and quickly remove these drugs from your home and communities. We can do what no one else can. Let us help you by putting bottles and kiosks in your homes in the city. Let us help you get started today towards a safer, cleaner environment and address the opioid crisis for future generations. Why wait any longer? My name's Larry Kenmore from Stat Medical and Disposal Corporation, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. If I may, I'm going to ask the police chief to follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Amber Callum.
I'm really sorry. Just give me a second.
Do you want to rest for a second, Amber? We can sit down if you need to come back.
Yeah, please.
Do you want to speak?
I do, but I'm really just rather...
I do, but I'd really rather wait for Amber. Is there anyone else on the list, or is that it?
Oh, okay. I no longer have an address that I can give you that I have a home. I no longer have a place that I worked hard for. I no longer have animals, or fish, or chameleons, or the school my children used to go to, or life I have any resemblance of knowing. But prior to this, the last time I stepped here, my entire life has changed. I really don't even want you looking at me, sir. If you gotta look at me like that, just don't look at me. Everything, everything, I don't know what you need from us. I don't know if this display that I have to do to you. I've been at the children's hospital every single day. I've been up there all day today. I had to get my son, I had to hold him down as he screamed as they took blood from him again, because they're testing him for chemicals, because all the other blood that they took from him, they can't find anything except for this large nodule in his lung. And he can't breathe, and I cannot take this anymore as you sit up there and you have no answers. And you had the power to put people out of this, to get them out of harm's way. You had the power to not let this damn x-ray happen to my son, and you chose not to do that. You did not think it was important enough. I'm wondering, do I have to bring my child's corpse to you? Is that what I have to do? Do I have to lay him up here with this dollar and say, "Look, this is what you have left me with"? Because I have nothing, nothing left. I am just, I am grasping at life right now. I am a fraction of a person that I used to be over this stump dump that someone made a shit ton of money on. And I assure you, sir, it was not me. And I assure you, it was nobody in this room, and we are all suffering for it, and we get no answers. And then you give us this false sense of security that these air monitoring is sufficient with the spikes that we have? 759? 759? How is this even possible in the United States of America? How has this gone completely unacknowledged by anywhere except for local news? How are you not on the news every single day? Telling people that you are sorry? You are sorry they are going through this? You will be there for them, and you will stay there and protect their children? This is it, I will not come to another one of these. I am sorry, I think I have been very respectful through all this. For over six months, I have been respectful. But what I have been through with my children for the last month, seeing them suffer, and now my other one has to go in. I can't take anymore if you had to watch your children deteriorate, and then you look at the people who you think are supposed to help you, and they don't do anything. They can't even acknowledge you. They look away like you're trash on the street. Like if they just don't acknowledge it, it'll go away. It's not going away, sir. I don't know what you need from us. I don't know what more I can do. I, I am in my shame up here, I am embarrassed, I am shaking, I am broken, and I am begging you to please help us. Please, help us.
Thank you, Mary.
My name's Kelly. I live at number four, Mary Anne Lane. Less than 800 feet behind the toxic dump site. I can't stand looking at you, please don't look at me, man. I'm surprised you're not doing this. Are we boring you? Not today? I'm sorry. I want to apologize to the group, like, I know I've been kind of out of line with my verbiage. I apologize to you guys, you know, I maybe said some things that were incorrect. Maybe hurt some feelings, maybe not. Did you hear what I heard? Did you hear this? This is happening in our backyard. How can you not be affected by what you heard tonight? And we've done this time and time again. We come up here pleading for our community to help us. I was here with Chris when you said, you were asked a question, and you said you could have us evacuated, and you seemed unacceptable. That's what you said. Right here in this circle of your constituents, when you were asked by Mr. Fowler and Mr. Burke, you stated, we have it on video, that at any time, you seemed unacceptable. What is unacceptable to you? You know what I mean? What is unacceptable to you? Because it's unacceptable to me. I've been to the, I don't even want to whine about my medical bills, and I'm healthy. This is all from within six months. You want to pay this? Does the city want to pay for my bills? I don't feel like I should have to. But yet, I've had to go because somebody can't put out the fire. I caught the fire department in the middle of the night, 10 o'clock at night, spraying down the dump dump, the stump dump. It's actually a toxic dump site. Yeah, out there in the middle of the night, going incognito, you know what I mean? With their spray gun. What were they doing? They said they were putting out a fire. I didn't see no fire. I didn't see no flames. You know what I mean? I'm, I just feel like, you know, what a shame. What is unacceptable to you? What is unacceptable to you? Because this is unacceptable to us. Can you please just help us, man? Make it unacceptable. Get us out of there, man. Listen to Mark's story and his family, Dot, Chris, Amber. I mean, there's many of us here that have the same story. What's unacceptable?
Thanks, Kelly. Appreciate you.
Yeah, appreciate you.
Can I, can I speak? I'm sorry, I showed up late. I didn't pick up my kids to get to work. I didn't have time to sign, and I just walked through the door.
I'm sorry, no, but.
Please do.
I was probably the closest one in the dump here.
Let him speak.
I'm getting sleepy. Three minutes, I'm not here to criticize.
Go ahead.
Can I come up? Sorry, I didn't mean to come in. I was watching it, we were eating McDonald's. We live about 500 feet from a fire. I, Kyle Whitlock, I live Two-Shawn Lane. You can see it from my house. I mean, I see it from my front porch. I'm not here to criticize. I have a hard problem because I know a lot of people come in, and I'm not knocking people. And I know they live four or five miles away, and they come in here and complain. And I think it gets dismissed because of that, because that's a long ways away, and I get that. But we're right on top of it. If you ask me how many days out of the week we smell it, it's seven. It's underground. I don't, I've never come up, I've never said anything. We, we live in a two-story with a walkout basement. I can't eat my downstairs. I swear to you, the smoke is in the ground. Obviously, it's in the ground. But the downstairs is different. My air purifiers downstairs are always red. You know, showing that red lit light. The top stairs is orange, and it goes green. Hey, when the days are good, days are good, I'm not complaining. They, last few days, last month, since November, it's been horrible. I woke up with my truck completely covered in ash more than once. Only reason I'm here is I, I see the posts on Facebook, I see the things. And being close to it, I react, and I wish people just, man, just back off. You can't make the complaint four miles away, you know? The wind's getting to you twice every month. You know what? I'm, I just wanted to come in and say, I am on top of this thing, man. I mean, my kids, they don't play outside. We played out Saturday morning. It was good. It was good, it was a good day. My son wanted to play, and he gets coming in. But you can ask them, and they'll tell you why they can't. I don't have to tell them. They know it's because of the fire. We gotta do something about it. The part that really pisses me off is that, to date, nobody's ever come to my house. None of you guys, nobody. Nobody's come to me. It's everything, it's the people who started the org, the deal in, what is it? First of December that started that, that grassroots thing? That's when everything got started, when the people filed the lawsuit. I'm closer than the people who filed the lawsuit. Half, half the distance closer to them. And I'm okay with it. Hey, shit happens, it's on fire, nobody intentionally did it. But it's, it's done, it's going on, you guys gotta do something. I mean, it's affecting my daily life. My truck reeks. It's too big, it's, I'm not saying, it's too big to fit in my garage. I can't keep it in there. The inside of it, I live in Springfield, I take it, I take guys to work. Because I, I move over a lot of people, I take them work, like, man, where the hell? I didn't know you smoked. Like, I don't smoke. It, it's inundating our whole life, and it's unbelievable. And my biggest problem is that nobody's come and talked to me. Nobody's rang on my door. Nobody's, nobody's done anything. Said, hey, you know, this or that. It's only been my neighbors that's come and done anything. I feel like that's your position. So that tells me you haven't done anything. As far as my perspective, nobody's done anything for me. I go anywhere, and they say, well, I mean, I went with the grassroots thing. Oh, well, it's ADQ has the point. Oh, well, they have the point. Oh, they have the point. And nobody tells me nothing. Your website, I appreciate it. It's five months too late. But I appreciate it, I understand, drive it. But now, now, this is getting worse. The first few months, I didn't notice. You could've told me it was on fire, and I didn't notice. Except for the ash on occasion, no big deal. But there's something wrong. I mean, it's staying low, and it probably has to do with the air, whatever it is, pressures, but it don't leave. It's a constant. I've got $1,000, I've got a 2,500 square foot home. I've got $1,000 in air purifiers running in there 24 hours a day. I've got the charcoal things in my, in my vents there. Who knows what it's, you know, I mean, I'm doing everything I can because I don't want to come in here and complain to you guys. I'm not here, I know it's not your particular fault, you guys didn't cause it. But now, it's time. It's time, I just wanted my voice heard and say, you know, I got two kids, they're at four. Man, they're doomed. I'm the only one that's been to the doctor. I've been to Afghanistan twice. I've been around incinerators, I've been around it all. I've never had this throat that don't go away. This hack don't go away. People at work, my wife, they make fun of me because I, constantly. That's just me. If it was my kids, I would be in here on fire. I promise you, it'd be a whole different person in here. But it's just me, and I'm okay with that. But it starts affecting them, you guys, I'm telling you, we're gonna have, the, the citizens are gonna have to come up, I mean, this is unbelievable. We've gotta get it taken care of. It has to be fast. Hear the, hear the governor talk about, oh, it's too much money, let's delay, 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 forgot the money. I don't give a damn about the money. You guys are gonna sue the shit out of whoever it is and get all your money back. Let's get this fixed.
I'm Jim Parsons, and I'm chairman of the Bella Vista Patriots, and I really want to talk to these people, and to you too. We've been working on this since 2004, and perhaps maybe the Patriots know more about this than anyone. We caught Cooper back in 2008, putting four concrete mixer drums over into the stump dump, 60 to 70 feet down. That's where the fire's coming from today. The ones in control of the stump dump at that time were the POA. The stump dump had the operational control from 2003 to 2016. When they sold it to Browns in 2016, they covered it up with dirt. There's no way Browns could've put that down 60 or 70 feet. It was covered up. It wasn't Browns. And that lawsuit, right now, against Browns, is totally wrong. It says that the city owned the stump dump and sold it to Browns. Did you ever own? No. Did you ever have operational control of it? No. Did the city ever have anything to do with the stump dump? No. It was the POA that had the stump dump. And the POA have deep pockets. They've got golf courses they need to sell. They've got some arcmold land they need to sell. There's our money. So the Patriots have filed, we're filing a lawsuit right now. I'm the plaintiff in a bigger one, $72 million of this preferred family lawsuit. It's a bigger one, and maybe it goes over three states. But this one, I want to tell you people, help is on the way. The governor promised that, but the Patriots are going to do it. We're going to file lawsuits. What I'm asking you to do, keep in mind, when this happened to you, whenever your child, you took it to the hospital, keep those medical bills. If you had to rent, move out, keep that rental receipt, we need it. So we'll have it for evidence, and we can help you file that with our attorneys, and get your money back, and get this thing put out right away. If this thing has to go through the legislature, and if it has to go through all that bureaucracy, that fire, it'll be forever getting it out. We need to get the POA, Cooper, and also the people who owned the thing at that time to pay for it. And so, keep your documentation, let me know. Because we want to build a case here to get this thing resolved, and we want POA and Cooper to get this thing out quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you much, sir.
Thank you, Jim. My thanks to all of you, and to those of you who have the prepared statements again. If you'd send them to me, please, that would help me a great deal. Okay, we're gonna move on with the agenda. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the December 17th, 2018 city council. They were circulated as part of your package. Are there any errors or omissions?
No.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vork?
Aye.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Carrie.
Thank you. Every year by law, a city mayor has to report to city council as required by state statute, 1458-302. And so tonight, I'm going to give my state of the city for the year 2018. We ended 2018 with an unrestricted reserve balance of 7.5 million, which is 600,000 greater than our budgeted expected ending balance of 6.9. Yes, ending balance of 7.5 equals 50% of our annual unrestricted revenue of 15 million. The 2008 general fund revenues, both restricted and unrestricted, of 17.7, exceeded 27, uh, 2017 revenues by 3.2 million, 2.4, which was unexpected funds from the Walton Family Foundation for grants to fund the Central Trails expansion and improve the Sugar Creek Bridge. Not counting the unexpected funds from the Walton Family Foundation, our 2018 revenues exceeded 2017 revenues by 800,000. Total 2018 general fund revenues exceeded the 2018 budget by 1.3 million. However, this includes the funds from the Walton Family Foundation. Excluding those funds, our 2018 revenues came in at a deficit of 1.1 million. The majority of this shortfall is in the category of restricted grant funds, which came in 700,000 under budget. A large portion of our fourth quarter grant funding is currently held up as a result of the federal shutdown, such as the Safer Grant, which funds nine of our firefighters. The remaining 400,000 budget-to-actual revenue shortfall lies in the categories of franchise fees, property taxes, and solid waste pickup fees. However, at the time of this report, we are still awaiting receipts from Cox Communications of approximately 80,000, AT&amp;T of approximately 19, and Republic Services for approximately 85. This will bring our 2018 unrestricted revenue budget deficit from 400,000 to 216. Street revenues for 2018 exceeded 2017 revenues by 164,000, exceeded the 2018 budget by 219,000. General fund operating capital improvement and debt service expenditure of 14.7 million exceeded 2017 expenditures by 2.1 million, became under budget by 1.3 million. The community development department and unfinished capital projects contributed to the majority of the service. The street fund, 2018, operating expenditures of 3.4 million exceeded the 2017 by 80,000, became under budget by 361. In 2018, we experienced the Trafalgar Road Fire, which is something that the city has never dealt with before. This continues to be a challenging time. This continues to be a challenging time for the residents who are impacted, and we continue to work closely with federal and state agencies, as well as our congressional delegation and state legislators. We have continued in parallel with other business. All thirteen projects cited in my 2017 report have been completed, with the exception of new library signage, which proved to be an expensive challenge, given the lack of electricity at the point of entry on Lancashire. Much more has been accomplished. We have found, and are in the process of acquiring land for a new fire station number three to replace the currently outdated station number three in the Highlands. Four fire employees completed the education and practical component to become community paramedics. We hired a replacement CID lieutenant and a much-needed narcotic officer position, and created a fully-trained outfitted and functional tactical response team. And fifteen new laptops were installed in the police vehicles with the remainder of the fleet to be, uh, to be completed this year. A financial five-year plan was created in 2018 along with the implementation of financial policies, including operating and budget management, capital management, debt management, and our reserve policy. Our finance director finely tuned the monthly presentation of our financial statements and updated our Financial Disaster Recovery Plan, which includes the backup of all financial data hourly rather than weekly. Our redesigned webpage is more user-friendly and visually more appealing with easy access. We collaborated with the county and the Bentonville School District to develop an effective communications plan well in advance of the closing of the Spanker Bridge for the county's bridge replacement project. We planned, promoted, and implemented several different mountain bike and community events, such as the successful citywide garage sale, an event that will be repeated in April of this year. Fifty-seven new PCs and laptops, uh, were deployed in 2018, and as of the moment, there are no city computers that are older than five years. In 2018, our new district court had twenty-one hundred and twenty-two charges filed, and the court disposed fourteen hundred sixty-two, with the remaining six sixty pending dispositions. Our staff attorney was busy in 2018 handling courses, uh, cases, excuse me, not only in our court, but also in the Bentonville Court, as we continue to wean ourselves from the prior court arrangements. On the HR side of the House, we reduced our medical plan renewal to a zero increase, and introduced an online benefits platform, reducing the hours to enroll. We recruited and hired new talent, including a library director, a director of community development services, and a new senior planner. Worthy of note is our reduction in turnover from fourteen and a half percent in 2017 to five percent in 2018, with the national average being eighteen and a half percent for municipalities. In March of last year, we partnered with the University of Arkansas and introduced a new manager training, as well as team building a first for all municipalities in Northwest Arkansas. So what's on the horizon for 2019? Continued collaboration with the EPA, EDQ, their contractors, to extinguish the Trafalgar Road Fire and clean up the site. We are also engaged with state and county emergency management organizations, and we have begun discussions with neighboring cities and the county to create a regional stump dump. Work on final cost and design for fi, uh, for major capital projects, such as a new public safety building for police and the courthouse, new fire station number three, a fire training tower, and more investment in our streets. Our goal remains to reduce the city ISO rating for fire protection from four to three to further reduce the fire insurance cost for our residents. This year, we will also see a resumption of the new Hull Dermatology Building and the rebuilding of Sunset Drive. Town Center East expansion of Harps and other improvements. The second annual sixty and sixty, which is the cleanup of Highway Seventy-One on March thirtieth. And we will see some new retail space shop, uh, shops on the trails on the east side of Seventy-One between Crylike and Walgreens. We are still working on the acquisition of the Centerton Waterline along Highway Two Seventy-Nine, and we hope to conclude the Comprehensive Land Use Plan 2040. We are also preparing for the 2020 census. Much of our funding from outside the city depends on an accurate census. We continue to work with the Bella Vista Library Foundation in their quest to build a much-needed addition to our library. We plan to remount another ambulance to ensure that our equipment is up to date to provide the very best of service to our residents. And work continues on the under eleven fifty miles of trails within the central part of the city. As always, I extend our thanks to the many volunteers in our community who tirelessly helped with the animal shelter, trail maintenance, the recycling center, the museum, our churches, and community groups and service clubs. Our community is strong. We stand firm in one spirit, striving side by side for goodness. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Why can't we do that with the fire? Not quack. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Bork?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The first is old business, it's an ordinance, amending the Bella Vista Code of Ordinances to enact an urban tree forestry and landscape ordinance and for other purposes. This was to be the third and final reading. We do, however, have some amendments, and I'm going to call on Councilmember Lloyd first to bring her amendment to the table.
Okay, thank you. Um, my amendment comes out of some confusion about how Section Five was stated, where it was, some people thought that meant that private owners would be responsible, or their property could be leased for the removal of trees, which was not the intent of the ordinance. So my, uh, I'd like to make a motion to amend this, where in Section Five, we're going to modify the last sentence of the section to remove the last clause. So after amendment, the sentence would read as follows. Private residential property not maintained by the city shall be exempt from the provisions of this ordinance.
Okay, we have an amendment on the table that's been moved by Councilmember Lloyd. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
No, I think that clears up any confusion. That's it. Because, uh, I think, uh, Ms. Fosdick, during our last meeting, expressed concerns. And I read through, I actually had it highlighted, you know, that did say private residential, but again, taking off that last part, I think clears it up. So there's no responsibility to the private property owner.
Any other amendments?
Can you wait? All right, roll call vote. On the amendment, Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bork?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Okay, we also have two further amendments by, uh, oh, okay. So there's just the one then?
Yes.
And do you want to read it, please?
Um, the amendment is to define what a private tree is. The ordinance is about trees, public trees, and it references private tree. Uh, so the amendment would read in definitions, private tree, any tree located in the city that is not a public tree. Public trees are defined in the ordinance, but private was not.
Okay.
Move to amend.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote on the amendment.
All right. Councilmember Bork?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. So, the ordinance will read, amending the Bella Vista Code of Ordinances to enact an urban forestry and landscape ordinance and for other purposes as amended. This is the third and final read. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, wait.
All right. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Bork?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Okay, the next piece of business is to appoint a mayor pro temp for 2019. This is part of the startup that we do every year. Just to refresh your memory, we'll be asking for nominations. I don't need a second. If only one name is, is put forward, then that person is elected by acclamation. However, if there's more than one, then we will vote by name orally.
I nominate John Flynn.
John Flynn. John, is that acceptable to you?
Sure.
Okay, any other nominations? Seeing none, then John, I will ask you to be mayor pro temp by acclamation.
Thank you.
The next is a resolution accepting the financial audit, a report presented by the Arkansas Division of Legislative Audit for the year ending in December thirty-first, twenty-seventeen. And we remember at the work session, we went into that in depth. Um, are there any questions? A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Bork?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is designating authorized dispersing officers and the municipal depository board for the city of Bella Vista for calendar year 2019. This is also something that has to be done at the first meeting of every year. Um, it authorizes who can sign the checks and also who can do the investments on the municipal depository board. The names are in your packet. They have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
All right. Councilmember Bork?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is awarding bid and authorizing a contract for all service electric in the amount of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars for construction of a traffic signal at U.S. Highway Seventy-One, also known as Bella Vista Way and Kingsland Road. This has been a project that we've been working on with the state for two years, and we got their approval to put it in place. It is a very, very dangerous intersection. We've had fatalities there. Um, and at first, the state turned us down, but we stuck it out, and in the long run, they said yes. So we went to bid. The actual amount in the approved budget is two hundred and sixty-five thousand. One bid was three hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, however, the winning bid was a hundred and ninety-eight, seven eleven. That gives us a bit of buffer, because we will also have to sync that light with the other lights on Seventy-One so that the traffic can flow properly. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any, any, uh, discussions or questions?
I'd be really happy to see it going in.
Yeah, me too. Wait.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Bork?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Okay, thank you. The next resolution is approving the mayor's appointment of J.B. Portillo to the Bella Vista Planning Commission to fill an unexpired term ending March the first, twenty-twenty-two. Due to the resignation of Steve Burke, Steve became a council member, he's not able to sit on the commission at the same time. And J.B. Portillo is actually behind a camera back there at the moment. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Wait.
All right. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Bork?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
The next resolution is approving the mayor's appointment of Lee Chronic to the, uh, the Bella Vista Board of Zoning Adjustment to fill an unexpired term in position two, ending October the first, uh, twenty-twenty. Um, unfortunately, the gentleman who was on the board, uh, has a health problem, and he had to, um, resign. And we went and did a, a public search through the papers as required by law, and, um, Lee stepped forward. Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Bork?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
The next resolution is awarding a bid and authorizing a contract with the Centerpoint Contractors in the amount of two hundred and ninety-seven, four forty-three for construction of trail crossings as part of the Bella Vista Trail Expansion Project. And this is for crosswalks and signage, and it will be charged against the Walton Family Foundation grants. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Wait.
All right. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bork?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
The next resolution, awarding bid and authorizing a contract with the Traffic and Lighting Systems, LLC, in the amount of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars for hybrid beacon and pedestrian improvements as part of the Bella Vista Trail Expansion Project. These are traffic signal modifications. And this, too, will be covered by the grant from the Walton Family Foundation. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Wait.
All right. Okay. Councilmember Bork?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
The next is a resolution, which I believe has an amendment?
Yes, we can read it first.
Okay. Authorizing a lease agreement with Northwest Storage Two LLC, doing business as Superior Storage, in the amount of a hundred and seventy dollars per month for the storage unit rental for the Bella Vista Public Library.
Would you like me to explain this?
Sure.
Uh, Suzanne Adams, our library director, was able to negotiate a little bit less expensive arrangement for a little smaller unit. And so, uh, it's, what the amendment that you have in front of you is the, would be the new agreement that's ninety-five dollars a month rather than a hundred and seventy. And this is a ten-by-fifteen-foot unit rather than a ten-by-thirty unit, which was, uh, what was previously on the resolution as presented. So in order to comply, uh, Suzanne is asking that one of you move to amend the proposal to make this change in the proposed resolution, and we'll have to vote on the amendment and then vote on the final resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? So, I'm going to vote on the amendment.
On the amendment. All right. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bork?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Amendment carries, six zero.
Okay. The resolution now reads, authorizing a lease agreement with Northwest Arkansas Storage Two LLC, uh, doing business as Superior Storage in the amount of ninety-five dollars per month for a storage unit rental for the Bella Vista Public Library as amended. A motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All right. Councilmember Bork?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The final resolution of the evening is authorizing the first amended equipment lease agreement with the Bella Vista Recycling Foundation for city-owned equipment, uh, use for the public benefit of the Bella Vista Recycling Center. For those of you that may not be familiar with the way the, uh, the equipment is purchased down there, grants are made available through the state for the equipment trucks. Um, a new baler has just put in place and other pieces of equipment. The recycling center actually writes a grant that I sign, and it goes to the Benton County Solid Waste Commission, because they are the dispersers of the money that comes from the state for these various projects. The, uh, the commission then determines and has a look at all the, all the requests, and then makes a recommendation and approves, and the Bella Vista- recommendation and approves, and the Bella Vista Recycling Center was actually approved for $85,000, excuse me, $80,000 to buy the baler. I'm happy to tell you the baler was only going to cost $65,000. It's now in place, and we're now putting a change order in front of the Benton County Solid Waste Commission so that they can spend the additional $15,000 on other pieces of equipment. That, too, will come here. So the city actually owns the equipment, and we lease it to the recycling center, and we buy the insurance and charge them for the insurance, and they pay the maintenance. So that's the way the whole network works. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Howler?
Yes.
Bork?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Okay, the next city council work session will be Tuesday, February the 19th, at 5:30 here in the court building, and the next regular meeting of city council will be Monday, February 25th, at 6:30 here in the court. The Planning Commission Work Center will be this Thursday, the 31st, at 4:30 here in the court building, and the Planning Commission regular meeting will be February the 11th at 6:30 in the Bella Vista Court Building. The Board of Zoning Adjustment will be February 21st at 5:30 in the Bella Vista District Court Building. And two other meetings that you may want to put on your calendar is a county meeting for February the 15th at Reardon Hall, and another county meeting on the same topic for February the 20th here in the courthouse. Both are going to discuss the sales tax vote for county court buildings. I believe the one on the 15th is at 10 o'clock in the morning, and the other one is in the evening. It was in the weekend newspaper, is it 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock here.
So you may want to attend that.
2:15, I'm sorry, I've got...
It's okay.
2:15 what time?
On 2:15, that's 10 a.m.
And what about the 2:20?
That's 6 p.m.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And again, you may want to listen to this because they are coming and asking for our vote to approve an increase to fund a new county court building.
Peter? Yes. I have a question. I'm thinking, I'm wondering about the city council looking at the issue of not necessarily just evacuation, but I think some people may want to leave some days, be home other days, you know, it varies quite a bit what it's like. I'd really like us to look into alternatives about this. I've seen some things on Facebook about people getting special rates on hotels and the greens, and I know that Vacation Rentals has 80 places, and Airbnb has at least 40 in Bella Vista, and VRBOs, I think, have at least 40. So I'd just like to look into it, see if there's something we could do to try and help people out.
As a matter of fact, I have gone to the governor's office this afternoon, and I'm asked if he would consider writing a letter to President Trump to free up titles three and four, and in particular, asking for mortgage relief so that those who want to leave can do so.
What if you don't have a mortgage?
Well, this is only, this is only part of Title III and IV, there's more to it. But I know that I was contacted by some people about doing this, so that has been sent off and also sent it off to Congressman Womack in DC, okay? I have been in contact with the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management because it's in their purview to be able to look after any kind of evacuation. I did not receive a call back today, and I will be calling them again tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Peter, ma'am?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, some comments come back, and, you know, we maybe somewhat look like knocks on a log up here to some degree, you know, as people are expressing, you know, their feelings and what they're experiencing, you know, from this fire. Yeah, I just want to assure you, this couldn't be farther from the truth. I, you know, can speak for myself, and I think really for the council at large as well, but we're really sorry. I don't, we don't really know what to say. The feedback is going to alleviate, you know, any of the pain or any of the health problems that you guys are facing or any of the issues that may come down the road. I mean, I've been out there, I don't know how many times, and I have driven literally 360 degrees as close to the stump dump fire as I could possibly get from every single angle. Kyle mentioned tonight, I don't know if it was Toushon Lane, I didn't stop and knock on his door, but I probably drove right by it, and I was out there on December the 31st. And I, it took me, I don't know, two, two and a half hours. And again, I know I'm not the only one in city council that's been out there, so this, you know, that's what I did, and it was a horrible day. I mean, it was absolutely horrible. I'm just not going, oh my gosh, what if I lived here, you know? It's sad. So we just want to acknowledge all of your comments and the pain that you're going through, and also saying that we've got the one part, hopefully, a solution coming, you know, we have like, what, seven different options, and I don't think anyone knows which one they're going to take right now, but the work has begun to put the darn thing out. And to John's point, there are conversations. What about this whole other part? But I think the reason some people are probably a little bit hesitant because there isn't anybody that can really promise anything. There are a lot of conversations to be had, a lot of people in contact, and there are also conversations going on just within the community as well, you know, what can we do from an outreach standpoint? So we're going to work on it, and again, I know that's every single council member, that it isn't just me. So again, very, very sorry for everything this type of flights, I know it's very, very difficult.
And three of us live within the area where we can see it and smell it, like you folks are. Maybe not as close, but we can see it and smell it.